A hundred miles per minute, oh lord. Oh, that was back in my youth, and that was back when it was a selector typewriter.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, you're poking on those. Hey bud. I'm just gonna check this. No, I gotta counsel lady. Did you need something? Oh, with our name? Okay, I'll check it out. I'll let you know. All right, love ya. Bye bye. Ballgame.
Hello, everyone.
Evening.
Good evening.
Look at you.
Did you see it? Did you see it? You know, I'm always trying to do something different now. It's good to see everyone's pretty face, or handsome face, I should say.
I can be pretty too.
So Baker. Blue. Madam President, all council members are here. Good evening, everyone. It looks like we have everyone here. Is Stacy here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, he's at the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
I'm somewhere around there.
Okay, just want to be sure. Didn't want to start without you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's August the 26th, and the time is 6:31. This is Reynoldsburg Special City Council Meeting, and I am Angie Jenkins, President of Reynoldsburg City Council. This meeting is being held through electronic conferencing and livestream on the city's Facebook page. At this time, we'd like to call the roll. Molly, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Present.
Councilmember Savadi. Councilmember Pecaro.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Here.
And Councilmember Cotner.
Here.
And President Jenkins.
Here, thank you. Now we'll have the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Saying none, the agenda stands as approved. Now we'll have the community comments. Did the clerk receive any comments from the community this evening?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from Mayor Begany?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much, members of council, community members. Before you this evening will be an opportunity to give back to the community that has suffered with the COVID crisis. As most of you know, the CARES Act was passed earlier this year, designated money for the city to use as expenses to combat the issues presented by COVID. However, there are a lot of strings attached to that, and tonight we would like to find a way to provide relief to those that are suffering, including our schools, as well as the local businesses, to recognize their hardships. Earlier today, I actually got some great news from our auditor, Stephen Sisak. We actually received an additional $500,000 plus in CARES Act money. So later this evening, if you would consider increasing the small business portion from $200,000 to $300,000, I know that the residents will be most appreciative, the small businesses will be appreciative of that offer. But I stand by this as an opportunity to not only help our local community, but at the same time, we will have enough in reserve if and when the time comes that we can have a little bit more flexibility on these issues as dictated by the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a small question. When we talk about small businesses in Reynoldsburg, do you know approximately how many we have, and what's considered a small business? Is it a number of employees, or what's the qualifications to be called a small business?
According to the legislation, Madam President, the small businesses would be considered 50 employees and under. As far as the number of small businesses we have, probably more than I can count.
Okay.
Small businesses often.
Okay. And now, next on the agenda, item five is motions. There's a motion to suspend Article 4, Section 8, mandatory referral of council rules for the Reynoldsburg City Council. This motion is needed in order for council to consider both finance ordinances. The council rules require that all ordinances shall be referred to an appropriate committee for review and recommendation for adoption or denial prior to any final action being taken by council. This provision may be suspended by an affirmative vote of three-fourths majority of council. Are there any questions or comments from council? May I have a motion to approve this motion? Councilmembers Savadi, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Pecaro, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries, seven to zero. Item six is legislation for emergency approval. Would the clerk please read item 6A?
An ordinance authorizing a donation in the amount of $200,000 to the Reynoldsburg City School District said some from the CARES Act Franklin County Fund and declaring an emergency.
Are there any questions or comments from council regarding the approval of this emergency legislation?
I'm sorry, this is Councilwoman Strickland. I do have a question. With the $200,000 going to the schools, have we, I know that they were talking about upgrading like the internal servers, and it also mentioned about having students with limited internet options. Have those students been identified? And how is that where that money is gonna, you know, be able to help those students that maybe having, you know, need that extra help and everything, accessing classrooms and everything?
Thank you, Councilwoman Strickland. I spoke with the superintendent about this potential issue. They have those students identified through whatever measures that they use for that, typically free and reduced lunch and other things that are out there. I believe a deal is working, that they're working with, with an internet cable provider to provide some Wi-Fi as well. But those would be the ones that would be identified specifically for that. I don't think there's any criteria that eliminates anyone. It's basically whoever needs. Seeing as how school has started the last couple of days, I'm sure it will come as welcome relief.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from anyone else on council? May I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
Madam President, do you wish to amend the ordinance to increase? Oh no, never mind, that's the other ordinance, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Getting too excited.
May I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Is that Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. May I have a second? Is there any further discussion?
No, Madam President, but I would like to say I'm glad that we were able to help the schools with this grant money, so. It's.
Yes, I agree. Is there any other further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi? Oops. Councilmember Pecaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
The ordinance is approved, seven to zero. Would the clerk please read item 6B?
An ordinance establishing the Reynoldsburg COVID-19 Business Relief Grant Program, appropriating $200,000 from the CARES Act Franklin County Fund and declaring an emergency.
Are there any questions or comments from anyone on council?
I do.
Then I have a question.
Okay, yes, Councilwoman Lawson Rowe?
Yes. Are there any set-asides or any type of of opportunities that will be set aside for women-owned small businesses or any minority businesses for this grant?
Leave the, Councilwoman Lawson Rowe, I don't think there's anything in the legislation that is specific to that, but it is something that we are looking at with this money. We're going to be an equal distribution all the way around. There's going to be a committee that is formed, including the Development Director, myself, the auditor, Stephen Sisak, as well as the co-president of the Reynoldsburg Chamber of Commerce to make sure that all be used. And we give this, give this opportunity to those businesses that need it better out.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we keep top of mind that we are an inclusive community, and we want to make sure that there's equal representation. And just because there may not be a small business identified that is woman-owned or minority-owned does not mean that they're not in need.
And I'm doing a lot of door-to-door walking tomorrow and Friday to hand-deliver a number of the applications.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from anyone else on council?
Yes, I have a question. So in this legislation, we have mentioned the Franklin County, is that a money aside from the Lincoln County? Or maybe from other counties as well? Or this, everything is a one-go?
Well, I'll let the city attorney answer that one, because for the legislative purposes.
Yeah, so we received the lion's share of CARES Act funding from Franklin County. In fact, from Fairfield and Lincoln County, we only received, in both cases combined, less than about $15,000. So the strongest portion of the money obviously would need to come from the Franklin County Fund. That does not mean that we cannot provide grants to local businesses that have their principal location in either Fairfield or Lincoln County.
The only question I have is that if, for some reason, the $300,000 isn't enough, would we be able to go back and ask council for an additional amount?
Madam President, a lot of that will have to do on timing. There are very strict timelines that we have to follow for the accounting purposes of this. In some cases, the majority of it needs to be in, you know, as early as, you know, October, but certainly no later than December 1st, to make sure that our in-house accountings can take advantage of the time to fill out all the paperwork properly. The other thing is the unknown factor of the federal government right now. As I mentioned earlier, while I'm hopeful that the federal government will come to a conclusion that we will be able to use these funds a little bit more freely to benefit the city in particular, whether it be infrastructure or safety services. We wanted to make sure we had enough money set aside for that to make the compensate from some of our revenue losses. However, if the time comes that that does not look like it's going to happen, and there's still enough time and need in the community to come back to council for that, I would not be opposed to it. Because eventually, whatever we don't spend goes back to the state, and then eventually the federal government, which means that it's kind of money left on the table that definitely could help our small business community.
Okay, and did you say what the amount was that these grants would be for the small businesses?
Yes, basically, we're looking at anywhere from $2,500 to $10,000. The grant size would be determined on a combination of factors, including net loss of revenue, as well as expenses incurred because of COVID. There's a standard that's in the documentation that kind of gets that. So the committee that's been formed, Auditor Sisak, myself, that I mentioned earlier, we will be going through to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, that we have identifiable, quantifiable information about what businesses have lost and their incurred expenses, so that way we can compensate them correctly and accurately, so that when we have to report back to the state and the federal level, that we are following all the rules as well.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Madam President, my question is, what is the, I know y'all have not met yet, what is the process? What is the application process going to be? Will businesses be able to apply through the city's website? Is there a hard copy that they must fill out to and provide additional information to choose how much between the range of money that they will receive?
It's a complicated question. I'll try and go through it as much as I can. Our, as you know, our website is not the most user-friendly, so we don't have the capacity to have online instructions for this. So we obviously are going to blast it out on social media. We are going to visit as many businesses as possible. I'm hoping to rely on local media as well for this. What they would do is they would fill out the paper application, and then they would have to provide the auditor's office with information detailing. As an example, one example would be the revenues that they may have earned last year in fiscal year 2019 from, say, March through July. And then they would contrast that with fiscal year 20, where they would again look for that March through July, and then they would be able to determine how much is lost in revenue. They are also going to be asked to provide an itemized list of expenses that they may have used, say, personal protective equipment. You know, if you're going to the local barber shop, if they have Plexiglas or something along those lines, they would have to be able to provide those expenses as well, as well as a few other indicators, so that way, again, we can have everything identified.
Okay, so the forms will be least printable on our website, that people, okay, thank you.
That's where we're hoping, that's where we're hoping to get out there in addition to it, and then they would have to be turned in to the city for review.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Madam President, I do have a question.
Yes.
Regarding the application itself, I'm just reviewing, unless I've overlooked it, is there a deadline date on when the applications have to be placed into the auditor's office? And you guys, you know, have enough time to review the application, all the information? Because as you stated before, that money has to be spent within a certain amount of time, and I believe it's December. I just think it would be wise to have a deadline date on, you know, when the application is going to be in, and that allow you all enough time to process everything on our end.
We're looking, if we're hoping for passage this evening, we're looking for at least 10 business days. So right now, tentatively, we're looking at September 11th, having the information turned into us. The way that the application process is set right now, a lot of these funds are things that would be, have been spent prior to today. So it would be something that they would be already spent, so this would be in compensation for that. So therefore, they won't have any problem spending the money, I'm sure. And I know certainly the schools have expressed opinions.
And just to be clear, the small businesses, this is money that, revenue that had occurred from March to August 31st? Is that correct?
I think that's, as far as the timeline for the, I think there's a little bit difference on the dates on that.
Okay, I just pulled that from.
I believe it's March 1st of this year until August 31st of this year.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was just worried about just the deadline and making sure everyone has their information and enough timing, so you all can be able to process on our end. Because again, I know this money needs to be spent by at least, I believe, December 31st. So I just didn't want any last-minute things coming in and something happens.
Well, while they may have to spend the money by that time under the federal guidelines, our agreement here with the auditor's office, because they're going to be doing a lion's share of the accounting with it, obviously, they need to have everything in at a much earlier date. So internally, we're looking at December 1st, and I think as far as process for them to get the information to us. Again, that 10 business days, I think is a fair window, once we get all the information out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other comments or questions from council?
I do. This might be an auditor's question, or not sure who, but we've, some of the money we've had also, I know like we helped with the police to direct traffic at Helping Hands and some other things that have happened already through CARES Act funding. So again, we've got a significant amount of money already. What, what have we used so far, monies on locally? And how much, again, what's, what's that dollar amount look like? And, you know, how much more of that do we currently have planned, if any?
Currently, up to about last Friday, and we're doing this on a weekly basis, we've spent approximately $90,000 out of the now $1.6 million that has been allocated to us with the two dispersals of CARES money. With this $300,000 if approved, and the $200,000 for the schools, again, we're looking at that point where we would have approximately $1 million remaining after that $600,000 disbursement, which would be sufficient, I believe, not only to compensate anything for future issues with COVID-19, and still have money left over for, again, the, if there is an opportunity to use this for other purposes, either safety forces, infrastructure, things like that, that the federal government would have. And again, once we have a clear understanding what the federal government does, we are more than happy to come back and find another way to add to that. But we wanted to make sure we had enough in reserve, just in case something did happen, the so-called worst-case scenario, that we would not be held without reserves to compensate for anything that comes up.
And, and this, this specific legislation tonight that we're looking at is dealing explicitly with for-profit businesses. So we're dealing with, again, primarily small businesses. What about our nonprofits, like the Harts and even some of the other nonprofits that are doing work in the community that have lost a lot as well? Can, I guess the first question would be, can this CARES Act funding be used for nonprofits? Which, which I think, I thought I understood that it could. What is the outlook to provide some funding for, for the significant amount of nonprofits we've got in the community that are struggling as well? So what's, what's the thought process on that, too?
I agree. You know, I've actually spoken with leadership in Hart and Helping Hands Food Pantry specifically about this. They, they are just as in need as anyone else, but for their good work that they do. The qualifiers for that probably will be a little bit different. That's why when you look on the application, there's a number of ways that they That's why when you look on the application, there's a number of ways that they can look at, how to show what their, their losses have been. And the rest I'll kind of defer to city attorney Chuck on that one for the legalities. If I missed anything.
No, Councilman Conner is correct, and so is the mayor. Nonprofits could qualify for grants from the city's CARES, CARES Act allotment. I think that's something we're going to look into, similar to how we've done it with the school, where we identified what the school's need was and then we were able to present a donation to the school. It would work the same way with any other nonprofit. We do have, at least my office has drafted a, a form agreement for any nonprofit who would be interested and we would come back to council for that donation, once we were able to identify what the need is and what the amount is that would be donated. But that is, I think, something council can certainly expect to see coming up in meetings to come.
Okay, and, and that would be, again, specific, like this legislation is showing, again, businesses are having to give tax returns and, you know, profit losses. I mean, they're having and showing then obviously what they're using the monies for. Like the one for the school district, they can only spend that for their technology needs. They don't, they can't go out and even hire a new employee or something like that. It's, it's very directly tied to what they can use it for. So would that be the concept with our nonprofits as well? That they would have the same kind of logistics, that they'd have to be very specific of what they could use those dollars for and what those grants would look like for them?
Yes, we need to be specific in what the, the grant is being given to them for. So they would need to identify what the need is. And then we would formulate our, our grant amount in the language of the grant agreement to specify how that money is to be spent.
The overall goal of this is to provide an opportunity for small businesses and nonprofits. You know, there are a lot of accounting measures that we have to take to make sure that our city is protected in the process, but we're going to try and make it as non, not as much of an issue with only a limited number of hoops to jump through.
But this one tonight is only the business side of it. This has nothing to do with nonprofits. They're, they're specifically excluded from this, though. So tonight's legislation is purely on the, on the small business side.
Correct, correct, Mr. Schick?
Yes, this is just for small businesses. So the Ohio General Assembly passed Senate Bill 310, which specifically permits municipalities to use their money to set up these small business grant programs. We are required to do just what we've done tonight, which is set forth the specific requirements for qualification, what those eligible expenses would be, the process by which they would pay back any improperly spent money. That is specific to small business grants. The nonprofit grants do not have those same requirements under SB 310. So we have a lot more flexibility to that.
Okay, thank you.
One other quick question. The, the grants that we are providing to the small businesses, would they have to pay taxes on that money?
Auditor Sisak, I don't believe. Because they are grants.
I, I, I'm not a tax attorney and I don't want what I say over Zoom to be construed as legal advice to those small businesses. So they would want to consult their own tax attorney with that question.
Okay. Would our city attorney? All right, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? At this time, I would like to make a motion to change the amount of the appropriating 200 to 300,000 from the CARES Act. May I get a motion from someone on council to change the 200 to 300? Thank you, Councilmember Pacorrel, can I have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Bryant. Is there any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacorrel?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Councilmember Cutner?
Aye.
The ordinance is, the motion to amend this ordinance has been approved seven to zero and the amount is 300,000. Next, we will have a motion to approve this ordinance. May I have a motion to approve this or approve this motion by someone on council? Councilmember Bryant, may I have a second?
Second.
Member Lawson Row, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacorrel?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cutner?
Aye.
The vote is seven to zero. It is approved. Thank you, everyone, for approving the ordinance. It's very important to help out our school system and small businesses whenever we can. And I think that we are very able to do that. And it's nice that we were able to do that and put in a position to be able to help our community. Item seven on the agenda is upcoming meetings. I'd like to thank everyone for participating this evening in this special meeting. Our next council meeting is Monday, September the 14th and at 6:30 PM. And at this time, we are trying to make some adjustments to be able to meet face to face. We will not know that until maybe another week or so. We're trying to put items in place for social distancing so that we can meet. And of course, with the CARES funding, we should be able to possibly do that. So we thank you, Mayor Begany, for allowing us to be able to use some of those funds so that we can practice social distancing and perhaps be able to meet September 14th. But at this time, we don't know about getting the equipment and to be able to set off partitions in the chamber so that we can meet. But we will notify everyone in enough time to let you know whether we're going to be able to meet face to face. If not, we will meet and again via Zoom, but definitely by the end of the month of September, we will all be together again and be able to meet face to face. If there's no other further business or questions or comments from anyone on council?
I have a comment, Madam President.
Yes.
So I just wanted to just publicly thank the mayor and city attorney and Mr. Sisak for allowing us to have this discussion. It is so important for us to support our schools and our small businesses because they are the lifeline and the bloodline of our community. And without our schools and without our small businesses, our municipality would not be able to do half of what we already have in place and so much more that we'd like to, to do. And then two, I'd like to just share with you a friendly reminder that this Saturday, the 29th, from 10 AM to 1 PM is the school supply drive at City Hall. And so Ms. April Darling is heading that up from the Lions Club. And I look forward to seeing all of your smiling faces volunteering as we pass out all of the, the school supplies that we've donated. Thank you.
And also, when are they looking for volunteers this week to put everything together? Um, we have to contact April, I believe it is Thursday at City Hall. Mayor Begany, are you aware?
Yes, April has a dedicated team of volunteers to come in. They're going to be here tomorrow night putting the bags together. And I believe that they are, that they have enough. However, I'm sure that, reach out to me tomorrow if you would like to volunteer a little time to put them together or hand them out on Saturday. And I'll make sure to see if we have them for you. You never have enough help.
Thank you. If there's no other further business from anyone this evening?
Madam President?
Yes.
Sorry, I was mute, so I wasn't able to sneak in. But anyway, two things is, one, I do want to reiterate what Councilwoman Lawson Row said about thanking Mayor Begany and Attorney Schick and Mr. Sisak for for the, the work that they're doing on the CARES Act. And also that the city is able to help the school district and the small businesses. And also must mention what Councilman Conner says about our nonprofits because they too do a lot of heavy lifting in the community as well. And the second one is tomorrow night, there is some football. So I can't be there in person because of COVID, but high school football. I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully, hopefully this year we take it to Gehanna because I'm tired of them winning. And also, this is more of a shout out. Hey Shawna, I do like your new hairdo. That looks pretty nice, so I'll leave that at. Thank you.
Thank you. So do you know who Reynoldsburg is playing tomorrow?
Gehanna.
Oh, it is Gehanna?
Yeah, Gehanna is the first, first game.
Okay, I didn't, I missed that part, okay.
And I can be there, Councilman Baker.
Oh, so you can give us play-by-play?
Or, you know, no, no, just, just film it because I don't want his play-by-play.
Okay, if there's no other further business, I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 7:02 PM. Thank you, everyone, and they say.
Thank you, have a good night.
Aye, thank you.